Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November 15th meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And may I ask if you would join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We need to adopt the agenda. There are no changes.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We have, I think, the plan report, which will be done by Rhodes Marston.
Yes, Madam Chairman. The Comprehensive Plan Improvement Committee met on November the 13th. There is one agenda item for review, which was an update to the Eastern Frederick County Road Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The primary purpose of this update is to incorporate VDOT's work on Route 37 and Route 522, and to clean up and clarify a number of roadways shown on that plan. The committee did recommend approval of the changes, and this item will be discussed tonight because it's on this agenda.
Sir, thank you very much. Okay, I do believe Dr. Fayo is here from the City of Winchester Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. At our meeting two weeks ago, I gave a report on September and October. The city has not met since then. We will meet next Tuesday. At that time, we'll have two public hearings, TA 17-646 and RZ 17-683, and I'll report on them at our meeting two weeks hence.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. Mr. Dunn from the Board?
Madam Chairman, the Board of Commissioners met, and they approved a 12-month festival for, hang on a second, Madam Chairman, for Belgrove.
Okay.
They also went and passed a conveyance of about three acres to Clearbrook to Frederick Water for an easement issue. And the Board of Supervisors also terminated the rest of 150 community development authority.
Thank you very much. This is the time in our meeting that citizens can offer comments. Where you can't do them is for the public hearings, and we have three of them, and you do that while the public hearing for that item is going on. Does anybody have anything that they would like to speak to us about, other than those? Well, seeing none, we will close this. You can't hear me at all. It must be my voice.
I have a public hearing.
Really?
Yeah.
Can you hear me better? Okay. Okeydoke. Well, shall we start again? This is the time when you may come forward to address the planning commission on any item that you would like to address us on, except for the public hearings. And there will be a spot in each of those three public hearings when you'll have a chance to do that. Is there anyone else, or anyone would like to speak to us regarding anything else? Okeydoke. We will close the citizen comment portion. We do have three public hearings, and I'm going to ask the audience, because you're here, and we like that, if you want to speak for a public hearing, do something for us. And that is, know that this is not a tabulation or a vote. This is not a discussion. What this is, is our attempt to try and solicit information from you regarding each of these projects. So, the other thing is, if something's been said about it, somebody else don't come up and repeat it. We've heard you, and we'd be delighted to deal with it. So, let's get going. The first one is rezoning 05-17 for ON Minerals Chemistone, otherwise known as Carmuse's Limonstone. Submitted by Lawson &amp; Silick PLC to rezone 394.2 acres from the EM Extractive Manufacturing District with proffer to EM Extractive Manufacturing District with revised proffers. The properties are situated generally west of the town of Middletown. Specifically, the Middle Marsh Park property is located east of Bellevue Lane Route 758 and west and adjacent to Heinz Road Route 625, and is further traversed by Chapel Road Route 627. The Northern Reserve is bounded to the south by Cedar Creek and is west and adjacent to Meadow Mills Road Route 624. The properties are identified with property identification numbers 83-A109 and 90-A23 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a request to amend the proffers associated with rezoning 03 of 2006, which was approved back in 2008. With that rezoning, 394 acres were rezoned from the RA District to the EM Extractive Manufacturing District. Now, tonight, the applicant is seeking to revise some of the proffers from that 2006 rezoning pertaining to the view shed plans, berm heights and installation timing, landscaping, exhibit removal, and cemetery access. If I can direct you to the screen on your left. Now, the subject properties are these properties outlined in black. For reference purposes, for location, you have the town of Middletown, and you have Chapel Road that traverses the property in this location. Now, the amendment seeks to remove a number of things. First are the proffered overall plan, the phasing 1, 2, 3, and 4 plans, and the 12 view shed plans, which were all components of the generalized development plan. Now, this amendment seeks to eliminate those and only utilize one generalized development plan. This is the GDP that was included in your agenda. It's generally consistent with the outline of the previously approved GDP in reference to the berm locations and the properties. Now, I'm going to go straight into the main proffer revisions. First, the view shed plans, the berm height, and the berm installation timing. Now, the view shed plans that were from the approved rezoning depicted the proposed berm heights that would provide screening and protection for the surrounding properties. The berm heights showed on those plans ranged from 10 feet to 30 feet, as depicted. Now, the berm timing. There's berms A, B, C, and D. Now, berms A and B were to be installed within 10 years of rezoning approval, which would be next year, 2018. Berms C and D were to be installed no later than 10 years before the commencement of mining at north of Chapel Road. So, this amendment before you tonight removes all of the minimum and maximum, which are the 10 to 30-foot heights shown on the view shed plans, and the timing is now prior to the commencement of any extraction of materials. Now, I just wanted to give a kind of a brief talk about just an example of one of the view shed plans from the approved rezoning. This is view shed 7, which is the view from some of the residential properties along Western Just to give some reference, you have Western View Drive, and the view shed we're talking about here runs through this area. And the berms I've circled in the red, the green, and the blue, those were all. The one that is in red, it's not working for me, sorry. Again, this one in red, it was a 30-foot berm, and these two berms, which were on both sides of Chapel, were 10-foot berms. Now, with the proffered revision, all of these view shed plans, there's 12 of them, would be eliminated from the rezoning, and the proffers before you would take it, remove all heights, so it would be the applicant's discretion on the heights. One of the more minor changes is the cemetery access. This seeks to eliminate the Marshbrook Lane access and provide a new right-of-way that would provide access to the cemetery from Chapel Road. Now, the approved rezoning stated the applicant would improve the Marshbrook Lane access within 12 months of completion of the cemetery restoration. So, this amendment doesn't contain a timeline for the installation of the accessway, and it doesn't contain a backup for the access on Chapel if that were to not be approved by VDOT. So, staff would note that it appears the proposed proffer amendment will have a great impact on the surrounding residential properties, and the applicant should provide additional information and justification on the berm revisions and the changes requested, and how it would mitigate the impacts to the surrounding properties. So, with that, staff is seeking a recommendation from the planning commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed amendment, and staff would be glad to receive questions. And Mr. Ty Lawson is here on behalf of the application.
Questions, Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins, I also noticed that paragraph 4.1 relates to water supply. You didn't mention that. Was it fulfilled some other way?
Today, we did receive a proffer amendment from Mr. Lawson, and that's the red line copy I passed out prior. There were two deletions. One was the water, and one was the reclamation. I would note the staff and the county attorney haven't had time to review those, so I can't comment on them at this time.
Okay. So, those are new deletions, not?
Correct. They were received this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Oats?
I noticed the date of the proffers, the original date is February 24th of 2017. How long has, I guess, the applicant been working with staff on these revisions?
Staff, myself, did initial comments in June of this year. I know the applicant has been working on them prior to that, but staff's comment went out in June.
So, you didn't see him until June? Or see the project until June?
Personally, myself, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr.?
Ms. Perkins, in the original proffers, there were a lot of commitments as far as pre-blast surveys of the properties surrounding the quarry and the work areas. Who was responsible to make sure that the applicant did those, or actually performed those commitments that was agreed to in the original rezoning? Is the county involved with that? I mean, specifically, the surveys concerning property conditions, water well conditions, seismic monitoring? Who was responsible to make sure that the applicant actually performed that work?
It is the applicant's responsibility to make sure that they are fulfilling their proffers. Should it arise that those proffers aren't being fulfilled, or there's a complaint against them, then staff would evaluate, investigate, and determine if the proffers are being met or not.
Have the staff, has staff heard anything from any residents that the proffers were not implemented as originally agreed to?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Perkins?
Under the section there, 2.2 on page 3, they cross that quite a bit, and I thought I heard you say that the berms shall be landscaped, and they shall be installed prior to commencement of permitting. This says "at the commencement," which makes it sound almost like it's simultaneously. Is that, was that just a misspoke, or are they actually going to be installed prior to permitting?
Bear with me why.
This was the new, the revised one we just got tonight?
I can only comment on the one that was in the agenda.
Okay.
I haven't really had time to go through that new one.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, the one in your agenda, and shall be installed at the commencement of permitting.
I thought you had said it prior to. That's okay. So, that makes it sound like they're going to be doing those simultaneously, then? Okay.
Ms. Penone?
Ms. Perkins, I just have one question for you. As currently proffered and as it was approved, the development of the site, or as the berms were installed and everything, we did have specific, or do you have specific guidelines for how the berms would be planted, the sizes, et cetera? So, all of that is specified, which would then
Yes.
obviously guide their installation, staff's review, et cetera?
Correct.
And just to clarify, with what's been proposed, it's, again, left to the applicant's discretion?
Correct.
As to what actually comprises the berms?
Correct. The berm heights would be up to the discretion of the applicant. They eliminated the landscaping detail that was in the previous one, and there's a statement in there. It has to be reviewed by the zoning administrator, but it's still
There's really no specificity
Yes.
for that, whereas the current approval that's on the books, we have
Correct.
obviously much more to work with. Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes. Along those lines, I was, a timeframe for how long it may take for these berms to be built. Have you heard anything on that
No, sir.
period of time?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I think, just for clarity for the planning commissioners, we ought to take what was presented tonight that was submitted three or four hours ago and just ignore it, because we can only act on what was presented to us unless the applicant wants to ask or postpone it for us to review and work on this one. So, I know we keep looking at that particular agenda that was just handed out, but I don't think it's doing us any good here.
I'd agree with that.
Ms. Perkins, could you go back to that screen where it showed where the berm location is, and kind of give us an idea of how close those berms on the north would be to that residential strip of communities, the housing that was there? Are we talking hundreds of feet, or? I know where the property lines, so is that?
Here you have the property line, and here you have berm D, which is the one behind it. I would really have to defer to the applicant if they have an exact distance that they're planned to be at.
Okay.
Both new and old.
Is there, well, I guess, is there any, you know, is there any ordinance, is there any way, the code, do we go by? How far, is that just up to the applicant's discretion, how far that, it could go up to the property line, I guess?
I believe there's probably standards from Department of Mines and Minerals, but again, I'd have to defer to the applicant.
Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Lawson?
I need help.
Sorry.
Just
Yeah, you do.
Cool. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the planning commission, Ty Lawson, here on behalf of the owner of the property. I appreciate all those comments, and I plan to hit those and actually address a few others. Just to start off, it's very important to point out, although it's styled as a rezoning, this is a proffer amendment, and Candace did a great job pointing that out. And specifically, what we're trying for with this is not to pull away from any of the standards, the protections, and so on. In fact, if you look through the red line, those all remain. But to address the berms, and in particular, the berms on the north end of the property, up against Western View, and then the Nichols property, although I've heard some of the Nichols property's been sold, but that property generally to the east. We have done several proffer revisions in response to Mr. Oats' question. It's a great point. When we started this exercise, we actually wrote it in a way that we were just focusing on the things that we wanted to change. As we got into it, it was pointed out, and I think properly by staff and the county attorney, that this rezoning is actually so old, it goes back to '05, and much has been done. It would be, and do well, to go through the amended proffer statement and point out all those things that have been accomplished. So, there is quite a bit of red in there, and sometimes that's a little daunting, and it looks like a lot's been changed. But really, it's to point out all those things that have been done, all those things that have been started and which will continue, such as the well monitoring, the pre-blast surveys, and so on. And so, the idea, as we did these revisions, was to give you all, and then ultimately the Board of Supervisors, an understanding of much has been accomplished. And again, the focus is, and the amendments that are being sought here are the berms, and then also at the request of a neighbor at the very end, to relocate an access road for what we call the north cemetery. With regard to the edits that you've received today, they are actually very specific, and that is the generalized development plan to point out the monitoring wells and the legend that had not made it on the ones that had been submitted. Staff pointed out that that layer, when the engineers printed it from the original one, going back to '05, had been omitted. We got ahold of Panoni and had that added. While we were at it, we actually asked him to go ahead and put in gray all the property that we had conveyed to the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. It's a little over 36 acres. It wasn't on the original GDP, so we added that as well. And there's a tweak of one of the berms near the north cemetery. Apparently, the way it had been located in the original one, the berm was on top or encroached on that, and so we properly moved it. And then the only other edits, and Mr. Thomas, I think, pointed it out, was Article 4, and I think it's also 10. That actually makes reference to old, and you've got to remember the timing of this, this was '05. It made reference to agreements that existed with the sanitation authority in '05. As we page forward in time, those agreements were terminated, and a new agreement was put in place, and it was called our attention, that this is kind of silly. We're talking about pursuant to agreements that were in effect prior to '05, and they're no longer in effect. And so, that's why that housekeeping matter was changed. But if you would, and you can look at either red line version, it really doesn't matter because the language has not changed. We'd been asked to go through all the things that we have done, and so that's what we pointed out. And we start, I believe, at Historic Resources at 31, and you'll see little notes, completed or ongoing, and that sort of thing. And those are designed to give you a heads-up as to what we're doing. The first is the eight-acre historic reserve, and it's on the GDP. Actually, that grew, and we conveyed a little more than 36 acres, and you can see it on the amended generalized development plan. There was also reference to doing a Phase 1 archaeological study, and there were certain requirements that were to be done. As part of that, in fact, we went above and beyond that. Dr. Guyer from James Madison was commissioned to do the work, and I had a chance to catch up with him today. He referred to the work as complete and comprehensive, and the work that was done was consistent with the most aggressive standard in the industry. And he's done a fair amount of work, Chancellorsville and other places, and what was done here exceeded that. And he was complimentary. He said Carmuse is committed, was committed, and has been committed to doing the study correctly. A little north of $1.2 million was spent by Carmuse to pay for that work and to do that work, and it was on the entirety of the property. It's exciting stuff, and if you ever have time, Dr. Guyer will walk you through all the work that was done and what was found. Two cemeteries, 33, were identified, and they were restored. The first is right off of Chapel. It's to your left, excuse me. And you can see that today. I don't know if you all remember. I do. That was in overgrown woods. There were some stones that were not discernible. They were laying on the ground and so on, and so archaeologists went in. They actually found where the individuals were buried, restored the stones, and so on. And it's, actually, there's a pull-off. You can go there right off Chapel today, and signage and so on, and fencing, of course, we put in stone piers, but it was done quite well. And that is work that's been accomplished, and we continue to take care of it today. The next is the, what we call the north cemetery. This is north of Chapel Road. There is a small family cemetery that was restored, and this is the one that is accessed by the Marshbrook Lane access currently. And what we have been asked by the gentleman and lady that owned the property would be if you all would ultimately approve this to relocate the access. It is installed. We built it. We were actually pleased to learn that at least a couple of times a year, the folks whose descendants are buried there, they do visit and use that road. And so, at the request of the property owners, and if it is approved, we would relocate it, get the necessary permits to install an entrance here. There was a question, I think, raised about the timing of it. The road is in. It is installed. The intent is to keep that in place until such time as a replacement is approved and installed. And again, the thrust and the purpose of this is to give that family the ability to visit that cemetery. So, again, we'll leave that up to the county as to whether that movement is approved, and then we would install an access road. But in the interim, that access will remain open, and it's nice to know that it's being used. This, again, is generally the lane that we're thinking about installing. And by the way, it's a gravel road that's there now. We would install the same quality and so on. Just briefly, the groundwater, it's labeled as completed, but that's probably more properly as it's underway. It continues. We do the, we talk about the pre-blast surveys. We talk about the well monitoring. All those stay the same, dust control, blast control, traffic, it's identical. The cap on truck trips, et cetera, and that they are only allowed to come out of the one point. All that remains the same. I'm sure you all will remember, those were issues that were very important to folks, and those impacts were, they remain. Pre-blast surveys, ongoing. That is, I'm sure you all remember. If you don't, that's where we agree and contact those folks within 1,500 feet of the zoned, rezoned property, all the individuals and properties that are there, and ask those individuals if they would like. We will send a private, they're not connected with us, consulting company to come in and examine their foundations for any damage, and record that. And then, as we go forward with mining, we would continue that effort and, of course, have something to compare to. Likewise, I'm sure you all remember the well monitoring, and that we would go examine their wells, measure the level, the performance of it, and so on. And that way, they would be able to determine if there was any harm or impact caused by any of our activities. And we had that guarantee, that if your well is affected, it's not a you got to prove it, we will come in and replace it and provide you with an alternate water source and so on. That remains. All of that language remains. If you look at the red, the only change is applicant to owner. Honestly, I can't remember who requested that edit, but we put it in. We're the same people. Just so you know, we have contacted, and there are 85 properties within that 1,500-foot arc. We contact those folks and have contacted those folks. Houses have changed hands over the time period. We check the rolls at least once a year, and we contact others. We've actually contacted 105 families, and we send them the same letter. We actually keep records of this, and so if Mr. Charon or anyone else wants to look at that, even more than happy to give it to them. And then, for those individuals that will allow us access, we come in and do that work. So, again, we're up to 105. It's still the same 85 properties, but some of them have been bought and sold over the time. Noise abatement, same requirements. Can't emphasize that enough, because we have heard some comments Can't emphasize that enough because we have heard some comments about what about noise? What about lighting, permitting, et cetera? All those restrictions that we agreed to back when this rezoning was approved remain. And we've put ongoing because they are ongoing for our existing mining operations. Phasing, we put completed in part. Y'all do need to understand, and I'm sure you've seen it, the A and B burms have been built. The stockpiles, if you all remember that, I believe it was the folks at Bell Grove had some issues about that. And even though it wasn't part of the property to be zoned, it was actually already zoned property, we agreed as part of the proffer to bring that stockpile down and install these significant burms, which are the 30-foot burms. And that leads me to why we did what we did, and I'll show you later as we get into these 30-foot burms. They are quite a sight to behold. They are very large. They are significant. The planting scheme that is called for is not necessarily a natural one, and we have learned from that. And so the language actually that we put in, the revised proffers, is the language that was used and approved by the Board of Supervisors for the Clearbrook rezoning. And the purpose was to have irregular burms because nature doesn't make a flat-top thing. And a member of the Board of Supervisors was quick to point that out to us. And then the other thing that he pointed out is the trees that were selected. Although their forester may recommend and like those in our area, they don't like our area, and they don't grow well. And the recommendation was be a little more random. And so we use the identical language that was approved in the proffers for the Clearbrook rezoning. And we do make the burms irregular in height, and I would suggest that that board member was quite correct. He's in the business, and he ought to know. And it looks much, much more natural and better, and so we use that language here. As to the burms, this is a picture of the burms that would be under the existing rezoning. You'll note where they are in location, and the footprint gives you an idea of the size of these things. To get to a 30-foot, and again, if somebody wants to see a 30-foot, they're welcome to come out. We've got them. It is a massive footprint to then go up the required slope, and then it's flat on top so that it can be worked on. And this is a scale of what it would be, and someone had asked the distances. You can scale these off under the existing proffers, and it's approximately 100 feet from the property line. And if you all will remember, this was something that was a back-and-forth with the residents. Candidly, I think some of it came out of if 10 feet is good, then 30-foot is better, like some people talk about medicine, and I'm not sure that's a good idea. And what we have done, and two gentlemen are here with me who examined this afresh, they were not part of the rezoning, actually asked the question, why do we have these significant burms right off these folks' backyards? This is not going to be attractive when it gets installed. And that's what started the process in meeting with some of our neighbors, those that would meet with us, about would you like to see something different? And if it were approved, would this meet your satisfaction? This is what we're proposing, and the difference in scale and proximity to the residents is quite noticeable and remarkable. And probably the best thing, and I have other slides that'll show you, is we're intentionally putting them behind existing vegetation, existing tree lines, and we think it makes a significant difference and will make for a better situation when in time these things get installed. Should also point out, somebody asked a question about the timing. The existing proffers require that these burms be installed 10 years prior to mining activities. There was also a clock on the other burms that had to be installed within a certain period of rezoning, and we have installed those. These, in order to stay ahead of the 10-year rule, and what has triggered the why-now question, if you will, is that we would need to start building these in 2018 in order, think again, 10 years, 2028. That is the language that's in the existing proffer. So we have taken out the timing, and we have put in that we would do it at the commencement and do it, again, behind the tree lines so that there's less disturbance. Unfortunately, a correct read of the existing proffers, we have to disturb it, build it, plant it, and then wait 10 years, and then disturb it again. We would argue and think that one of the benefits of this is you can wait, and we don't know when it'll commence, but using that same timetable, things just sit for years, which, when we met with the neighbors, everybody loves that idea. So that's certainly a positive. This is more of a close-up, again, to give you the size of the scale. You can see the homes. You can see the size of the footprint of the burms. Again, a close-up, the burms are put further behind, and behind the existing trees. There's a fence line there that's grown over quite significantly, and so we're able to locate it behind it. This is one of those burms that had to be built, has been built, was the result of bringing down the stockpile. That's 30-foot berm. And that's, I think Mr. Basil's standing there. And the planting scheme is quite dense. And again, we got comments from a board member that when that grows, I think the more irregular thing would be a better thing to look at. And of course, the flat top is, it just, it doesn't look natural. We have put up balloons. A gentleman asked us to do that, just to get an idea of where are the corners, because it's kind of hard to see. This is actually taken from our property, and we did this just to let you know, the balloons that we actually put up, we had to step back to get them. But the yellow balloon is a little over, actually, the bottom of the balloon is 30 feet. The balloon's around three or four feet in size. So that is 33, 34 feet. The red balloon, that's not the height of any berm. Our problem was we had to get it up high enough so you could see it from the other side, from western view, and from the eastern properties. That's, they can tell us, but I want to say it's 60-some feet. We are not putting up 60-foot burms. But that was done so that somebody on the other side and from the neighborhood could look back and see where are these burms going to be behind the tree line. This is a view shed that was taken from one of the homes in western view. I believe the gentleman's name was Janess. I think it's subsequently been sold, and another family lives there. But this is the view that you see, and you'll notice the trees in the background. That's that vegetation that we're proposing to put the burms behind as opposed to in front, which is what would be required under the existing proffers. That is a scaled 30-foot berm, similar, well, identical to the one that I showed you that we've installed on other parts of the property pursuant to the proffers. This is the same view, although we actually got a little closer, and it's kind of hard to show a berm because you wouldn't see it. And by the way, these photographs were just taken in the last few days. So this is certainly fall. There's a lot of evergreens, but you don't have the benefit of the deciduous trees here. But the real tall one is just to give folks an idea of where the corner of the berm would be. And if you're standing in western view looking to the south, this is the left corner, the east corner. And you can see a little bit of the yellow balloon. And again, we intentionally put it over 30 feet because you couldn't see it otherwise. This is, I believe, the McNeely property. This is further down western view, towards the cul-de-sac, looking, again, towards that tree line and where the burms would be. This is the 30-foot berm in the view shed that they would have under the existing proffers. And again, we actually cheated a little and blew up because you can't see those balloons, unfortunately, when you're just taking it as a normal picture. But if you look hard, you can see the, a little bit of the yellow, and then the red one, and that would be the other corner. So that's, I guess, the western corner. This is a view across the street of western view. I believe this is the Stroin House. They're actually elevated, and they're looking down through the valley. It's pretty. And we, I'll go back to that. I don't know, I don't have the pictures of the balloons. I think they're beyond, but again, you get the idea. This, in case folks have a question, this is a, we call it the Winchester Plant. It's actually in Clearbrook. But this is the result of the language that was approved for the rezoning up at the Carmuse Plant. And again, it's more of a random, it's irregular, and the planting is a little more spread out. It allows things to grow. And the tree selection, we intentionally use the words, it has to be approved by the county, and they can consult. Mr. Charon can and does consult with the forester. But we get trees that survive, and actually, you can see they're growing there as opposed to those plastic sticks that you saw with the 30-footer. And this is the generalized development plan. And at the lower, the southern part, we're not talking about any burms there, but it does show the 36-plus acres that were deeded, actually, over to the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. There was some earthworks found there, and it was deemed to be historically significant. And I would assume that as they go forward, they will restore that, and you'll be able to access it. It's actually, there's some parking property on the other side of the road. I believe it's around four acres, and they can use it for that purpose. This also shows the new burms behind the existing tree lines. It shows the access for the north cemetery. If it's approved, we would install the alternative access off of Chapel. And Candace is correct. The view sheds and those sorts of things, which took into account the contours of the ground, and of course, it showed a significant berm up against the property line. And then what was in front of it and what was behind it, there really isn't much point in doing a view shed analysis here because it's behind existing trees. And so there's not much to see from this. This is certainly much more simple. And with that, we'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
I have several questions, Todd. Why, and maybe I've just missed your explanation. You're relocating the locations of the burms. I missed why you're relocating them. I mean, why wouldn't you put them behind the vegetation anyhow?
When we first started this process, and I remember this, we, there was some concern. We're all, first of all, we're here because we need to be here, have to be here, and it's because of the high calcium limestone that generally runs in a north-south way up and down the valley. We did not know and have better ideas as to where the stone was, and it generally runs all up and down the valley and frankly, beyond Virginia. And so we were, we have this property. It's been owned by mining companies as long as any of us can remember. As I recall, the title report from before the neighborhood was created had it owned by U.S. Steel. But the point was to be able to install the burms 100 feet off the property line. You've got that setback, and then you can start to mine everything back. These gentlemen came on board, did some more exploration, and determined that the high cal actually starts to come to the surface as you go further north. And the short answer is, because they can, they were able to do what we believe is a good thing and pull those impacts back and leave the field, the pasture field, in its current condition.
Well, okay, just to make it real simple, then. Kemstone was the one that located the burms originally. We, the county, did not tell you where to locate them.
Right.
That was your choice. Okay, so you're just relocating them now based on where the high-quality mineral is that you want to mine?
That's part of it. The other part of it is, and I give credit where it's deserved, is a fresh set of eyes looked at this in the form of the gentlemen that are going to be mining this site and operating this site, the younger people, if you will. And they have seen the larger burms that were built and asked a lot of good questions, like how did this get to like this? And when we start to build this, there's going to be all kinds of hue and cry. Now, it's all approved, and it's part of the rezoning, but they then did the work to determine that we can do something different, and it'll be better for the neighbors.
Relocating the burms has nothing to do with the height of the burms?
The height, and honestly, I can't remember exactly how we got to 30, other than we needed a barrier. And under the mining rules, you have to have a barrier. You can have a certain stand of trees. You can put in chain-link fencing. You can do berming. This company and its predecessors have always done berming. They don't have to do that, but it's what they've done, and frankly, it makes for a nicer barrier than a chain-link fence or something of that sort. There was no requirement to go 30 feet, and I believe, my memory is, that was as a result of the public process, and there were demands for more and more. And I think the belief was that it provided more and more insulation, barrier, whatever you want. It was not something that the company wanted, but they can build them. It's not an issue.
I know. I'm not exactly sure you answered my question.
Okay.
But you can relocate the barriers, put them behind the vegetation, still build them at 30 feet. The 30 feet is not dependent on where the location is.
No, no, you're right. You could. And I'm not saying we're going to do that. The intent is to vary them and so on, but the neat thing about this is even if you do them at 30 feet, and we're not saying we're doing that, you don't see them.
Right. And you could still make some undulations and some irregular forms and not have just a plateau, flat-top on them behind the vegetation.
True. The others were very, Roger, were very specifically prescribed. Only an engineer would like something like that. I mean, it was perfect. And you can drive on those things. I've been on top of them. They were very well spelled out, and honestly, it was an evolving thing through the public process.
Another question. There was a lot of pre-blast surveys that were supposed to be accomplished, and I know this revised proffer says nothing about the pre-blast, it doesn't change anything on any of the pre-blast surveys. It doesn't change anything as far as the density of the blasting goes. The blasting density stays the same in the proffer because it's controlled by The blasting density stays the same in the proffer because it's controlled by Virginia Mining. So there's no changes to that. But if I understand what you said in the presentation, the 86 properties that are within the 1,500 feet of the boundary, and it's not 1,500 feet of the blasting area, it's 1,500 feet of the boundary of the properties.
Of the rezoned properties, south and north.
Yeah, 23 and 109.
It's 85, actually.
Eighty? Okay, I thought you said 86.
I apologize.
Okay. But my understanding of what you said is all the pre-blast surveys were accomplished. There was engineering studies done of all of the 85 properties?
The, the, just so, and I'm sure there's a lot of language here that remains unsigned or unchanged. All of it remains unchanged, other than we're now an owner, we were an applicant. We contacted, under the proffers, we're required to contact all of those property owners. We did do that. We are obliged to offer them at our expense, no expense to them, pre-blast surveys and well-monitoring. There have been property owners that have taken advantage of that. There have been property owners that have either not responded or just haven't done it. We have no ability to go to people's homes and say, we're going to do this. We, all we could do is, and we wrote letters to them, and we do, we update every year and introduce ourselves and offer this service if they want it. And again, some folks have said, yes, come on and we do it and we provide them with the information. Others have either not responded or just declined.
Okay.
But it is still, it is still available. And for those folks, if they want to contact us, and I've had a change of mind, and certainly when the, when the properties change hands, we contact the new owners and with the same invite and so on.
And I didn't say, I think, when I started my questions, I think it's the historical resource preservations that you've done, that Chemstone has done, I think is commendable. And I think it's a great service to the residents of the county. So was very happy to see that.
Thank you.
One other question, and maybe it's too hypothetical to answer. But if you have a property owner that you've contacted, say, for the last 10 years, and offered to provide a pre-blast survey from an independent engineering firm of their water well and also their foundation and their house to make sure there was no cracking, no cracking in the plaster, water well was good, how would Chemstone tomorrow then defend themselves if that homeowner came back and said, I now have my plaster, my drywall, my house, it's all cracked, the seams have popped, the nails have popped, I have cracks in my basement? How would Chemstone defend themselves that you did not cause that?
That is an interesting hypothetical. I mean, you're, it's kind of hard to imagine, or I guess we could work our way through some kind of analysis of how we're going to respond to a suit that hadn't been filed or a claim that hadn't been filed. Obviously, it would be great if folks would take advantage of this offer because then everyone would know what the status of the property was in advance. And then we could, we could work from there. This proffer is not intended though, and I'm talking the one that's in place now and has been for years and the one that will remain in place. It does not change anybody's obligations to one another. So if, in fact, we cause harm to someone, just like if you cause harm to someone, you can't proffer that away. You're still obligated and you need to defend that and respond to that. And if you're responsible, then you need to, you need to address that and compensate. And we do have, and these gentlemen can talk more in depth, but at all of our facilities, we do address complaints or questions. And if it is the fault of the operation, then they take care of that. I think you talked to me before about seismic testing and all that. We are required, it's not part of a proffer because you can't proffer what you're already obligated to do. We actually measure that and have to measure that. But we actually have some folks that say, I'd like you to put a seismic device in my yard. I'm thinking that there's some issues here. We do that. And we, that exists at this facility today. People have asked questions along those lines. And we've, we've installed these devices so things can be measured. And if there are questions, this will certainly help answer that. So we, we do that now.
Okay, in the 85 properties that are outside, that border the properties in question, do you have any, I mean, I think you're required to monitor the blasting area with seismic devices. And you just said that, or indicated that you may have some outside of that area. Has there been any, how often do you check the propagation of the seismic waves in the surrounding properties if you have monitors at those properties?
I'll be happy to give you one of the engineers. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing evaluation. And again, it's per the permit, but I'm, I'm happy to turn it over to them and respond to that question. Can we grab Michael or Mark?
I can answer that.
Great. Good evening, staff. My name is Mark Basil. I'm the Site Production Manager at the Middletown operation. The question was, do we monitor regularly? We monitor every blast.
But how far out? Do you monitor on the 85 properties? I understood Ty to say that there was some seismic devices out on some of the surrounding properties. Do you monitor the propagation of the force waves outside of the blasting area?
What we monitor, we have permanent seismic graphs at three different residences that are closer to where we're actually mining at the southern end of the property. So at the northern end, where we have no mining operation, we have no seismic, or no seismic graph set up there. We do put portable units if there's a protected structure that's closer than the permanent seismic graph we have set up. So to answer your question, nothing in the north. It's too far away. But principally, they're always closer to like where the protected structures are at, where we're blasting at, so.
In those seismic units that are outside of your property, that are on neighbors' properties, has there been reported any, any impact, any force propagation that far out? Or is it all restricted to your property?
It's pretty much restricted to property. I mean, we, to my knowledge, we've never been out of compliance with applicable state laws with respect to blasting on any blast. We do occasionally get calls if the blast is felt stronger, be it an air blast or something rattles the windows. So we do get phone calls. It's not that we don't ever get a call. But to my knowledge, we have never been out of compliance.
When you, okay, that's interesting. On the air blast, you don't monitor the air blast?
Yes, we do.
You monitor overpressure?
Air blast, ground, ground movement on all the seismic graphs.
We have a public hearing to take care of and we'd like to get that done.
Okay.
And have your indulgence. And in that case, we will open the public hearing. And again, if you, excuse me, thank you.
No, no, thank you. And I just wanted to, I don't know if you all, it may be in your packet or not, but the Stroins were kind enough to write a letter. If you don't have it, I have copies.
You have one letter.
You do?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the public hearing will be people who want to talk about this. And if you'll come to the podium and give us your name and Magisterial District and let us hear from you. Again, we do ask that some concepts and comments are not repeated and repeated and repeated. We hear them and...
Hi, good evening. My name is Bobby Basile, or Barbara Basile is listed in the records. Owner at 379 Western View on one of the properties that borders the north unit of parcel 109. I'd first like to request that this vote be delayed or this decision be delayed. We've not had adequate time to review this material, nor have we had adequate time to meet with Carmoose.
Sure.
Yes. And I was not one of the folks that Carmoose visited and I'm not included in the everybody likes this statement that Mr. Lawson made. So I would suggest that it would be fruitful to delay this hearing so that all of the homeowners do, are afforded the opportunity to understand this better, understand the ramifications, and also see if we can compromise on some language to clarify some of these very ambiguous terms that are outlined in these red line revisions. The next point I'd like to make is that I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Lawson's statement that the proffer, revised proffer does not seek to remove any protections to the homeowners. First of all, the berms are the primary protection for the homeowners if you're talking about prevention of damages instead of remediation of damages, which as a homeowner of a half-a-million-dollar house, I'm more interested in protecting my investment than I am in, of course, the possibility of being able to potentially recover sometime down the line for any damages that might have happened by inadequate noise abatement, air emissions protection, blast control, dust control, or groundwater damage. The berms are the primary protection for all of those. The height of the berms to be at their discretion is grossly ambiguous by anybody's terms. I wasn't here and didn't own the home when the proffer, original proffer was put in place. So I don't understand the minimum height of 10 feet, maximum height of 30 feet, so I can't speak to that. However, I think leaving it to the discretion of the owner is absolutely removing the protection that our homeowners have in that. And would request that we have an opportunity to talk to the Carmoose representatives to see if we can come to some sort of compromise. As Mr. Thomas observed, moving the berm does not affect the size of the berm. And while we may be in agreement, or some people may be in agreement, I'm not sure. Everybody hasn't had a chance to confer on this, that moving it is maybe in our best interest. Certainly, reducing the size of it is not in our best interest to the minimum standard requirement by the state of Virginia. The next point I'd like to make is I've owned the home for seven years and I've not once been contacted by Carmoose to offer these protections of a well survey or a foundation survey. Nor have I been offered to have any monitors set up in my property. I would, I would very much welcome that and would take Carmoose up on that offer for a seismic monitor to be put on my property because we do feel blasts out there and they do rattle our windows and scare our dogs. The timeline of these berms is quite significant. Again, if the berms are our primary protection as homeowners, the revised language in this proffer would allow, as Mr. Thomas noted, for the berms to be constructed in parallel with mining operations to begin. So clearly, they could begin, as it's written now, they could begin mining operations without any protections being put in place to the homeowners. So we could hear trucks, we'll have emissions, we could have dust, we of course would have dust, blasts. All they're prevented from doing as it's worded now is extraction. We all know that a lot of mining can happen absent abstraction. The last point I'd like to make is that, oh, I'm sorry, on the timing of this. We absolutely, and I took a look at the original language of the proffers, and even though the, the timing around the phasing has been requested be removed, there is timing in, left in the revised proffer as it relates to the construction. But we absolutely, personally speaking, would want to include a timeline around when the berm is in place to allow enough time for this lovely vegetation that they're proposing, whatever that might look like, to be put in place before operations could begin at that site. So I think maybe if it's not 10 years, there absolutely does need to be some sort of language in the revised proffer around the gap in timeline between when the berm is constructed and when operations can begin. The last thing I'll leave you with is I tried to sell this house last year. It's $500,000 house. We were told by multiple realtors it was worth more than $500,000 and we were unsuccessful in selling the home. And I can't help but believe that that has a lot to do with the fact that we're going to end up with a quarry in our backyard. So again, I'm standing here as a homeowner, offering that you help us protect our investments by asking them to not remove the proffers that they already agreed to in the original zoning as the protections for the homeowners, that they abide by the protections that they already agreed to as it relates to the berm heights.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Would the next person like to speak? And I know that all of you who want to speak would like the opportunity. So if we could, again, think about the amount of time. Okay, can you do three minutes, four?
I'll keep my words short.
Okay.
I know we heard a lot of words from the mining corporations attorneys, but I'll use my words sparingly. My name is Keon Banks and I live at 216 Marsh Brook Lane. And I've lived there for 90 days now. We bought the home in September and moved in October 9th. The first we knew about a mine in our backyard was November 1st, when we got a notice of this meeting. It was quite a shock to us. We thought we found our dream home, our home that we're going to stay in, beautiful views. When we learned about this, we looked out back and we saw the beautiful blooms and thought, one day we'll have a beautiful quarry there. What we're thinking is, as we read the proffers, and I've sent emails to, I think, everyone on the board here, as we read the proffers, we figured they were vague and ambiguous in their wording. I'm used to reading some more legalese, but as you, as you read this, you kind of look at it and say, there's a lot of wiggle room in there and a lot of squirm room that nobody can be held accountable to what's in there. It seems like there's no measurable goals or no measurable standards set in place. Not having had enough time to really research the company and research where we're at and what the, what they're asking to rezone, and even for them to put things in at this late afternoon, what I would request is that we postpone or table this conversation or meeting till late spring so we can have a little bit of time to work through what, and needle through what the big mining company wants to propose to do. With that, I'll leave you and hope that you just postpone this for a reasonable amount of time so we can get our ducks in a row and figure out what they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, would the next person like to speak?
Good evening, Board. My name is Keith McNeely. I live in 443 Western View Drive. I am part of the original process and one of the original, probably six homeowners on Western View Drive. I was one of the residents of Western View Drive that was approached by Carmoose Limestone. Where discussion censored on the proffers and notably moving the berms back and reducing their height. It didn't escape me that by removing, but moving them back was great and reducing their height would be a great cost savings to the quarry. And I discussed that with the gentleman at the time. And I will say, they were nothing but gentlemen when they came to the house. The proffer of the berm initially was to mitigate the impacts of mining that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors allowed by granting mineral extraction for the quarry, for the right of water, water that they're never going to get. It seems to make sense that moving the actual quarry pit from a few dozen yards from our homes to 100 yards beyond a tree line and lowering the 30-foot berm to a less obtrusive height would be an easy decision. It makes sense to me. But I'm a healthcare professional and I'm not an engineer. I do not know the impacts of a 10-foot berm versus a 30-foot berm when it comes to explosions, crushing minerals, and extracting them for processing. I can only rely on what the engineers at the quarry told me when they spoke to me in my home. I was in agreement with the engineers and their proposal. What I didn't realize at the time was that so few residents in my neighborhood were reached by the quarry and by the quarry's engineers. I regret that I'm probably among 25% of the unanimous decision of those contacted in my neighborhood. My neighborhood is much more than just... My neighborhood is much more than just the four residents or so that they contacted. I can't be certain on that number. And I am pleased that I was one of the people chosen. That doesn't, I don't want that to escape the board. I ask the planning commission to allow the residents some time for further discussion with the quarry to discuss the proffer changes, allow time for the quarry to explain their position to all the residents so that we can make this decision together as a neighborhood and a greater neighborhood, not just on Western View Drive, but all the surrounding areas. I respectfully ask that decision on the proffers be postponed for a period of time suitable for all the residents to engage in this discussion with the quarry and that favorable results would end for all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Kevin Barrington. I live on Western View Drive. I unfortunately am one of the original ones that have had to live this nightmare since 2005, and what strikes me sitting here during the whole thing is that what is, we're talking about berms and stuff, but what gets me is why we're even here in the first place. In 17 or 12 years, I guess, it's taken, it still has not sunk into me what makes sense about any of this, about having a quarry in somebody's backyard. I understand that the land has been owned for many years, and they could have, you know, they could have rezoned that before the residential area came in. This committee did the right thing for us in 2007, voted no against the rezoning. It was our board of supervisors that let us down, specifically our own district supervisor in the Bat Creek District that let us down. So with that being said, we find ourselves in this place right now, and unfortunately you have to hear each one of us who are concerned, residents in Frederick County, come up here and throw out diatribe and whatnot, and unfortunately we had to sit and listen to that stuff. So I'm too, and one of the ones that have never been contacted. I made myself an unwanted dinner guest at a meeting between Carmouche and one of my neighbors. My neighbor, who lives across the street from me, called me and said they were having a meeting and didn't feel comfortable going by himself, so I went, and I told them that night, there was nothing they could do with the berms that was gonna make me happy besides keeping them on the other side of Chapel Road. And of course, they looked at me like that was not gonna happen. So I had spoke to a couple of you guys regarding the blast and stuff. It's 2017. I still feel the blast. It is true that I'm not one of the ones that call and complain because it's not my makeup. I understand it's an industry. I understand that they were there, that particular area was there before I was, before I bought my house. I understand that. I can live with that. What I can't live with is them encroaching upon my property and getting ready to do the same type of blasting that already feel, that already knocked pictures off the wall that are gonna be now within hundreds of yards from my house. That's concerning to me. And yes, I'm not one of the ones that has been contacted about the well survey or about the blasting survey, and I'll put it here on record now because I didn't know it was my responsibility to contact somebody. If they hadn't contacted me, I want my well and I want my blast survey done. So we had a meeting, I spearheaded a meeting on Monday night, and one thing that came through, I think we had 25 families represented, and the one thing that came through was, it happened to be the same day that we got the letter that stating that it was a unanimous decision amongst our neighbors that the moving of the berm was a good thing. The one thing that was unanimous was that we were not unanimous. So if that makes sense to you guys, we were so across the board about what we wanted and about what was pleasing to us, and some people were armed with more information than the others, and I like the other ones. I want to express that I think it's time for us to slow things down a little bit, give us time for those, you know, for those new guys like Keon to get caught up on what has been transpired over the last 12 years. And it shocked me that they would try to slip something through at the very last minute on a proposal that I feel has probably already been rushed anyway. It's not fair to you guys to have to sit there and make a vote on that, and it's certainly not fair to us not to get to see it. So with that, I just want to close and say that, you know, Carmouche has claimed at the beginning that they want to be good neighbors. They aren't. They haven't held up to the end of the bargain from the get-go from the original proffers, and what makes us think that they're gonna do it in the future? As you guys make your decision tonight, please remember that many of my neighbors are new to this fiasco, and some have had less than 90 days to take it all in, or less than actually two weeks to take it all in. So if the committee, or if Carmouche wants to be a good neighbor, it wouldn't be my neighbor at all. So I thank you for your time, and again, like the rest, I hope that you guys will vote to postpone this a little bit. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm one of your men's, please. I'm dry.
Anyone?
It's good to see you again. Ladies, gentlemen, my name is Bill Hunter. I live on Western View. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm gonna try to condense a lot of this because I will be repeating, they never make these things tall enough. I will be repeating, but I do want to repeat one point if I could. The wording being vague, ambiguous, unspecific, the balloons were a nice touch, but they marked the berm, but what part of the berm? I don't know. No one's ever contacted me. The information that I have, I have gleaned from Kevin doing most of the legwork, calling people to try to find things out. We don't have any markings where they are. No one's been told, well, this is the portion of the berm that's marked. We also, we still have not got an answer from Mr. Lawson, the question that was put when Candace was here about the distance from the property line. I would like to make sure that we make a note to get that distance. But basically, in 2007, 2008, we sued to try to prevent it. It didn't work. We lost. Back to the present, we're gonna have a quarry in our backyards. There's a young fellow that worked for me that grew up out here in what I call the country because I'm a transplant. I love it. I moved out here because I loved it. Danny says it is what it is. So we're gonna have a quarry in our backyards. What we're asking you is to soften the blow as much as you can. Again, the ambiguity and the non-specific placement, I mean, they can say remove all height barriers except what DMME requires, which I believe is around five to seven feet minimum. You can move back behind the tree line, but the things you have to consider is if you drop it, and it looks like that particular area I'm speaking of on the map there, it wasn't addressed, but it's the area that borders Western View, it doesn't look like there's gonna be any berm to me. That's the best I can assume from all the paperwork I've been through, and I've been through the entire 2035 comprehensive plan. I've been through the original proffers and now the amended proffers. So without beating a horse to death, I would just like to say that the vagueness was reflected in Harrisonburg when Carmouche sued the FCSA for failure to reimburse them for expenses in the zoning process, for the rezoning process. And the funny thing is, the judge, a federal judge now, could not render summary judgment for the fact that there was so much vague, non-specific, and unclear wording of the actual document. He couldn't render a judgment. He had to turn it over to jury trial. My understanding is that it was settled at a court, but this vague, non-specific, do we see a pattern emerging here? That's what we've gotten. Therefore, considering, there were 38 people at the meeting that Kevin spoke of, 25 families were represented, so it looks like we have a lot more legwork to do. There's a lot more people that might have something to say. I would like to see Carmouche be a good neighbor. I'd like to see this board table this until at least the end of the first quarter of 2018, and in the meantime, let's touch base and sit down and see if we can work out some compromise. The minute that we filed suit, any attempt at compromise was, they basically spurned it. They just didn't even consider it. It was like it was our way or the highway, my way or the highway. So basically, I can understand why they did it. I have nothing against Carmouche. They saved money, cost me less to gravel my driveway. That's great. As the board of supervisors, I have a rub with and will have a rub with because we were thrown under the bus, basically. The decision was made long before, we spent $49,000 and a lot of time that we wasted and time of yours that we wasted making the report when you voted in 2006. So again, I would ask that we table this, and I know that's been asked before. The balloons are great, but I have no idea, no one's told me where they are. No, I mean, I can see them in the sky, there's no doubt about that. But what part of the berm are they on? And the berm that comes up to my house, how big is that gonna be? Okay? I thank you for your time, and I hope you consider our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding this rezoning? Yes?
I also support tabling this to a later time, but I want to explain to you, the pictures that Carmouche showed on there were taken from properties that are, sit at a lower elevation. There's three houses that I know of, and one of them's ours, and one of them's Keon's, and there's another one next to ours. We sit up very high on a hill. We can see where they cleared the property out, where they're going to dig this huge pit, and we were counting on 30-foot berms with trees on top of that to obscure our view of this, like, it scares me, like, this huge pit from hell, like, you look into this huge hole in the earth. So I don't think we, we as neighbors can't even say that five-foot berms are be okay or 30-foot berms are gonna be okay because as you saw with their pictures, five to seven foot berms might be some, good for some properties, but they're not going to do anything for ours that are staring down into this place where this huge pit is going to be.
Thank you. The one thing we need from you is your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Laurie Hunter. I live on Western View.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Paul Clevenger. I live at Western View Drive. I'm a sixth generation of Frederick County, Virginia, and why are we here tonight? We are here because Carmouche sued Frederick County Water, the new branded sanitation authority, for not paying for the proffers, which is $1.7 million they predict the berms will cost to build. They want to scoot around paying the money that they should pay in order to make their wallets bigger. I'm not a good speaker, but I oppose this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Kisek, and thank you for this time, talk, and to reiterate, some of my neighbors have said, I have been here for 12 or 25 years. We have been on the borderline and affected by the ON mining, and I understand they want to be a good neighbor and do the right thing. Back in 2005, was it? We had the original public hearing, the meetings. Yes, I would eventually like to go up and address the map with your permission. I'd make this fast. I could make it even faster and say I have three basic points. One is to think this through and properly address it with all the concerns the new citizens have, the new residents. It should be postponed. Basically, ON has waited to the last minute, the last two months, the last year, the holiday months, to put up a sign and request this. I'm curious what's gonna happen if there is even any good faith involved in this at all 40 years from now, which I believe is when their minimum date and time is to start digging the mine. Now, some of us would also like to know, and it hasn't been specified, there aren't checks and balances in place, there's no citizens council meeting, no review process. When they start, how big is this hole gonna be? How many acres? 395 acres? 100 acres? 1,000 acres? Not sure. There was also mention of a tunnel that Route 6, well, Chapel Road is gonna be changed. Traffic will change, that there was gonna be a tunnel that goes underneath Chapel Road. We haven't heard anything about how that's gonna be designed, how big it's going to be, when it's gonna start. There's also water on the property, streams, Middle Marsh, and Tom's Brook. We haven't heard what's gonna happen to them. Are they just gonna disappear? Other than that, I would definitely recommend you go back and watch the video of the first meeting that took place between ON and Preserve Frederick, which was an organization that was formed at the time. The video says a lot. Most all the proffers that you're hearing about and giving them accolades and gratitudes about archaeological surveys and well monitoring or placing the water, those issues were brought up by Preserve Frederick. It appeared at the time, ON was just, wanted rezoning and was gonna start blasting hundreds of feet from new residential homes. It didn't exist hundreds of years ago when US Steel owned this or the Indians roamed these grounds. This is all a new area that has developed around the land that ON owns. Some would say the two are mutually exclusive. You are not gonna have homes with children, residential areas, 100 feet from people detonating explosives. Now, my numbers might be accurate because we don't have anything to go by. How far are they going to be detonating explosives from the backyards of us, people that live here and pay taxes? I'd like to address the map now, if you don't mind, make it fast.
I don't see a scale on the map that tells you how many miles.
I believe that's lower right, the scale. The scale's lower right on the map.
Oh, down here, yes. Can't make it out. Can you see it? Does anybody know?
You might be able to see it on the screen.
I can't figure it out up here. Let's see, ON's current headquarters is...
Sir. Sir. Sir.
No, I said, I'm sorry. I was trying to, I can't read the scale on here, you're wrong.
For decades, our windows shake, cracks appear, dust falls from the ceiling, there's plaster, it isn't all home. But I am familiar with my neighbors and probably 40 people that were involved in this original process of protesting and concerns over moving blasting from down in this area all the way up here. And this is surrounded by homes, residents, people, families, children, animals, dogs, gotta go up, get to work in the morning, gotta sleep at night. Oh, we're talking about air horns. All this stuff has not been spelled out to us exactly. Is there gonna be nighttime lights? Big nighttime lights, because if you go down to ON's original quarry, yes, there are nighttime operations going on, trucks running, air horns, blast horns, and inevitable explosions.
Sir, would you come back to the podium, please?
I'll wait one second.
Uh, sir.
What I want to confirm this, is this your original headquarters, the current, present headquarters now? This place? Oh, sure. Well, I can't access the map from the podium. You can just, you can use the iPad. Use your pen as a pointer without gouging.
Wonderful. No, haven't used one of these in a while. What am I not doing properly here? I am pointing, pardon?
It's just for display purposes.
So I can't...
Perhaps you could ask your question to the planning commission or make your comments to the planning commission.
Okay, I'll ask the question again. Could ON please show me where the original...
No, sir. You need to talk to the planning commission. It's not a debate with the applicant.
Okay. Do any of you know where the original current headquarters is for ON, where they're blasting right now?
We do not, but we can have staff get that information for you.
Okay, that would be very useful, very valuable, because I can tell you...
Since that machine is...
Sir?
Yes?
We invite you back, please.
You need to be at the microphone.
I'll get rid of this. Talk to him back there. He said he could hear me. If you look in the far bottom left corner, that's where ON headquarters is now, to the best of my understanding, and we've toured the property. They were kind enough to give us rides and show us where they're blowing things up. Now, we're approximately, I'd say, three-quarters of a mile from the current detonation zone, if not a little more. I'd say a little more. That's where the investigation. They're now going to be hundreds of feet from us. We currently, at this point, experience foundation shaking, windows rattling, I mean, you'll hear air blasts, over blasts hitting the windows, and chsh, and quite often it comes in doubles. First, you get either the earth moving, and then the windows rattle. There is damage, like, people can testify to this. Pictures fall off walls, things get broken, items damaged. It's not a pleasant experience. They're now proposing moving way up, they're blasting way up to hundreds of feet from our backyard. I can't imagine what our houses are gonna be like when they start detonating and exploding, which we don't even know what the schedule is. Do they do it every day, three times a day, once a month? I'd imagine it's a couple times a week at least. I think it's really worthy of serious engineering study to analyze what kind of Richter scale geological shock waves are gonna be experienced by these homes that are now experiencing these waves and these shock waves, three-quarters of a mile from their house are now gonna be a half-mile or hundreds of feet from their house, or hundreds of yards. And I would, I would recommend that it be postponed till we review. And I have tapes and audios and videos and all documentation from the first meeting, if you would like to see it. I would highly recommend that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Anyone else?
I'm Patty Hanmer, and I live at Western View Drive, and I just want to say that I have, we have not received continual, continuous letters yearly.
Yes, that's been stated. Anybody have something that they just can't stand unless they tell it to us? Anybody? Well, then, I think we will close the public hearing. In our, the way our agenda works, the applicant has, the owner, has an opportunity to respond to some of the things that have been asked, and I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Lawson, if you can't sort of shorten it up. We've got the rest of...
I can, and I will. I appreciate that. In reverse order, the drawings are scalable. It's 100 feet from the property line under the existing proffers. It's 700 plus or minus feet when you put it behind the vegetation, the trees. But again, it's, all these are scalable. With regard to the contacts, it's a little troubling, because we, we do write letters. We did, first of all, for the pre-blast, and we have copies of them, fortunately, for the pre-blast and the well. And actually, as we started this process, we actually had our first contact with a neighbor back in September of 15. We had meetings with, with some of the neighbors, and it was odd, Mr. Barrington said he hadn't had any contact, but actually, he met in my office on March 7th of 2016, along with Mr. Burgoyne. And, and we have reached out, sent correspondence, in addition to, as you know, what's required by ordinance. And to be clear about the notices and under the proffers, where to contact the property owners, we've sent that out once. We don't send it out every year. We do when there's a new property owner. Other than that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All righty. Does anyone have anything? Yes, Mr. Moan?
Madam Chair, first of all, I have no problem with, with this being delayed or tabled, given the proposal and the comments that have been made tonight. I want to make a really quick point, which is that, you know, this ground is rezoned, so it's not a question of are we rezoning it? It's about the proffers being amended. But to me, those original proffers were established with, with the input of the community and through that process. So, that's one of the primary concerns I'm gonna have when I ultimately vote on this. It's, it can be pitched to me a lot of different ways about whether this berm or that berm or this height or whatever would be better, but if it's not gonna work for the community, I don't think it really is gonna have any, any residence. So, I think that's extremely important, if this is really gonna move forward with, certainly with an affirmative vote from me, that the community is engaged and is in some level of agreement with what's being proposed. I don't know how you get there. I think it takes more than what's been done, obviously, but, you know, I think that's an important thing. And that's all I really have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes? Mr. Oats?
Those of you that were asking about postponing this until out into the spring, the application's already in, the clock's ticking. If we don't act on it, state law says it's automatically approved if we don't act on it at a certain time. So, we can't extend this thing out indefinitely for you to keep working with Carmousse. 90 days would be reasonable, but, you know, we just, we can't go out till spring, just so you know that. The other thing is, like Mr. Moan just mentioned, this isn't a rezoning as far as where they're blasting, when they blast, how they do it. That, that gets out of the bag. We can't do anything about that. We're not looking at that tonight. Before I came in here tonight, after reading their application, I thought this was gonna be a pretty quick and easy vote tonight. But the applicant decided to bring in revised proffers at 4:00. You all were asking for this be postponed, so I could go along with that if that's the motion. As far as well and blasting surveys, I urge all of you to take up Carmousse on that to protect yourselves. Don't delay, get it done. Sooner you get it done, the better you chance you have of getting any claims of damages done. You've got proof then that, of what was the condition of your house prior to this and your well. Mr. Lawson, Carmousse, they're right, the language is very ambiguous. You got up here and you said that the road to the cemetery would stay in place until the new road was built, but you don't put that in writing. You mentioned a 10-foot berm, but you're taking out the minimum heights and the maximum heights. You're not required to build any berm except for what DME is gonna require. It's very vague. All the neighbors can see it. You don't have to be a lawyer to see that, that it's, you really have no commitments As far as taking out all the drawings, all the examples, I think that's a mistake. If you want to convince the neighbors, this board, the board supervisors, you better have some schematic showing the elevations, how the berms you're proposing to put in place will look, profiles of it. If the book berms you're saying is gonna be back behind existing vegetation, that sounds great, but is that existing vegetation 30 feet lower in elevation than where you would have built the berms to begin with? There's no contours, there's nothing showing how that new berm's gonna look. We don't know. The neighbors might be able to look right over top of the berm right into what's happening, whereas if it was 30 feet high and up near the property line, it blocks everything. But you have no drawing showing what your new berm's gonna look like. As far as saying that you want to copy what is being done up at Clearbrook with the undulating berm, writing so it's clear exactly what you're building, show an example of it, and stick to it. The way it's written, yeah, that might be the same language, but there's nothing tying you to do that exact berm that you're talking about. There's nothing there tying you to that. So, I think that's a mistake. I guess I'll stop there, but, yeah, it's just very ambiguous. Like I said, this was gonna be an easy vote for me tonight until you brought proffers in at the last minute, which is a huge no-no. I'd much rather just act on what you brought in to begin with, but it's not fair, because the neighbors haven't had a chance to see it. We haven't had a chance to see it until we sat down here tonight. The county attorney hasn't had a chance to comment on it. If anything, I think you should have asked if you were gonna change all this, to have this postponed prior to this meeting ever starting, if what you had presented for a public hearing tonight was not what you intended to present. That really perturbs me to see proffers changed at the very last minute. And also to the neighbors, I will say that I was one of the few planning commissioners up here when this one first came through, and I voted against the package then, and it was the only vote I've made up here that I regret. I was new, I had some veteran planning commissioners next to me. I said, you know, guide me, what do you think? But at the time, I thought, no, we should keep this one going and try and massage it and get the best possible reasoning we can out of this. So, if the board were happened to approve it, hopefully, we had something better. It didn't happen. We killed it immediately. It went to the board, and ultimately, it was approved, and you have what you have now. Keep in mind, when this eventually does make it to the board supervisors, there's gonna be five board members there that have never seen this before. So, be easy on them. They'll be seeing it for the first time. Thank you.
Sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to kind of ditto many things that Gary's expressed in his talk. I hate this. I hate last-minute things. Nobody has a chance to do anything with it. Here it is. Hooray. Well, if nobody else has any discussion...
I think we've got...
I'd just like to say one quick thing, and I agree with all the comments that have been made, but I'm very concerned whether they're upholding their original commitment to the proffers. And I know this is a rezoning, or not, it's a rezoning just concerning a couple proffers, but if there's other proffers that were in the original package and they are not being complied with, I think we have to look at it very seriously. Too many people tonight said that they were never contacted, and that was one of the big proffers, and I was here when this was done back in 2005, '06. That was one of the big concerns we had, was to make sure the neighbors and all the surrounding property owners were contacted, given the opportunity to do, to have the engineering surveys and the well surveys. Blasting over time will consolidate the strata of the soil, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you'll have problems with your wells today, but tomorrow or five years from now, you could. So, those surveys need to be done. If they haven't been done, shame on the property owners out there. Contact Kemstone, make sure that you get your survey, your property surveyed, and make sure they comply with the proffers. Kemstone should be reaching out to everybody to comply with those proffers. If they're not, you folks need to do it. Based on VDMME regulations, a blast that knocks pictures off the walls and rattles the windows is outside of compliance. I'd also make sure that if you're having dust fall from your ceiling, you request in writing that Kemstone puts a seismic monitor on your property to measure the seismic readings on your property, and somehow, that should be investigated with VDMME to make sure they are within compliance. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Marston?
Mike, can we go 90 days?
Yes, sir, you can.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone this rezoning for proffers, number 05-17, for 90 days, and give everybody a chance to catch her breath and catch up with what is going on.
Second? It's been seconded. Any other comments?
I'd like to request one amendment to that, and when it comes back in 90 days, we allow the public to speak again.
Yes, thank you, Gary. Yeah, with the public hearing, when it comes back.
Got it.
I'll accept that amendment as well.
Well, I think we're done with our work. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trippit, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And this will come back 90 days.
It's garbage and get back to my damn...
Oh, I didn't vote. It's okay. All righty. Thank you all for, for being with us.
Get rid of this damn thing.
We are, we are going to want to continue on, folks.
The first time my wind is rattled, contact the state.
Well, everybody got their piece in to be on...
Our, our next item is also a public hearing item. It's conditional use permit, 08-17, for Paul C. and Mary Valantino, submitted for establishment of a special event facility in the RA Rural Area Zoning District. The property is located at 4212 Apple Pie Ridge Road, Winchester, and are identified with property identification numbers 22-A89 and 22-A94, and in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. We're here tonight for consideration of a conditional use, a conditional use permit for Paul and Mary Valantino. Their property is located at 4212 Apple Pie Ridge Road in the Stonewall Magisterial District. The parcels, part of this application are parcels 22A-89 and 22-A-94. The property is presently zoned RA or rural areas, and the current land use is for agriculture, a working cattle farm, and open space. The proposed use as part of this conditional use permit application is for a special event center for weddings and other similar type events. Here's an overview of the property. The applicant owns the properties that are, the two properties highlighted in black, along with several other properties in the vicinity of the site. The two properties highlighted in black are the properties that are subject to this conditional use permit. You have Apple Pie Ridge Road here. The property is about two miles north of the intersection with White Hall Road, and you have Winding Hill Road here. The existing barn is highlighted in the circle. The applicant is proposing to utilize their existing 3,784 square foot, two-story barn for special events, including weddings, family reunions, and those type of things. They also are proposing to use an existing one-bedroom guest house as part of their special event facility. This will be used as a bridal suite for getting, getting ready before and after the ceremony, those type of things. They also intend to construct a gravel parking area to accommodate up to 150 vehicles, and they are gonna be constructing a new separate commercial entrance south of the existing private drive that accesses the property. The applicant is also proposing permanent restroom facilities and will be providing a new septic system and drain field as part of that. And they are not proposing any permanent kitchen. They note in their application that all outside food and drink will be brought in by caterers or by those utilizing the event center. And the facility may accommodate up to 290, 90 persons. This is an illustrious sketch provided by the applicant. You have your existing private drive here. The applicant is proposing a new commercial entrance here in a central access drive that loops throughout the property. The existing event center will be here, and the existing guest house is located just to the southwest of the, of the barn. The applicant has, is outlined a parking area here and an additional overflow parking area here to accommodate up to 150 vehicles. This is a picture of the existing barn on the site that the applicant intends to use for their special event facility. It's a two-story building, and it's been out to the property, and no many of you have been out to the property. The applicant has done a very nice job with the, the facility, and it has been reviewed by the fire marshal and the building official. This proposed conditional use is consistent with our 2035 comprehensive plan, which supports opportunities in our rural areas for agr... opportunities in our rural areas for agritourism and agribusiness. The Board of Supervisors approved special event facilities as a conditional use in the RA zoning district in May of this year. And the applicant has addressed all review agency comments, including those pertaining to site access, compliance with building and fire safety code, and the proposed use is consistent with the county's policies and regulations. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions. All review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. An illustrative sketch plan shall be submitted and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use. Events shall start no earlier than 10:00 a.m., and all events and related activities shall conclude by midnight. All outside music shall conclude by 9:00 p.m., and music may continue indoors until the conclusion of the event. All lighting shall be downcast to avoid glare onto adjacent properties and residences, and the events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 290 persons. One monument-style sign is also permitted as part of this application, and any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. I'm happy to speak to any questions you may have this evening, and staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on this conditional use. Paul and Mary Valantino are also here this evening, and I believe they have a few remarks. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Tyler? Any? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Paul. This is my wife, Mary. And we look forward to retaining agriculture. We purchased the farm in late 2015 and have done a significant amount of renovation to the property, as you can see from some of the photos there. The barn is the original foundation of the barn. We estimate dating back to approximately 1840. So the stone foundation remains the same. However, what was above the stone foundation could not be saved, or we'll just be gentle with it at that point. So what you see on top of that was new, as is the guest house that's up in the, adjacent with the property. We could not save that farmhouse either. However, we built what we call a tribute house, which has the same footprint as the old house. And I would love to answer any questions you may have. Look forward to your approval of the plan and preserving the property as a farm.
Questions of the applicant. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
All righty, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this conditional use permit? Anyone at all?
Good evening. I'm Donna Williams. I'm at 3725 Apple Pie Ridge Road. I'm at an 1864 farmhouse down the road from you guys. Excited to see this come to play, however, I am concerned about the noise mitigation and the traffic mitigation.
Ma'am, would you address the commission, please?
We're concerned about the noise mitigation and the traffic mitigation. That end of the county, we're pretty rural. It's a very winding road. We don't handle traffic well, and that's what we're concerned about, is how they plan on advertising the events and managing traffic when that occurs and how we're going to mitigate the noise, because we do see a lot of that up and down the valley. So those are just kind of the things that we're concerned about in that area. But we're excited to see that farm come back to life and remain a farm. But like I said, we are concerned on that end of the county about the traffic and the noise.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else like to address this? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Ray. I live at 3749 Apple Pie. And I do agree with the potential problems with the noise. That portion of the county is very rural in a sense. There's a lot of large homes, but they are far apart, and it's very quiet at night. Anything like, for instance, bands going to 9:00 at night would be heard a long distance out there. And I'm not sure if this would set a precedent in that portion of the county, that other things of similar nature could come in, and how quickly they could come in. And right now, there is really, there is no other businesses in that area other than two country stores that have been there forever, as far as I know. So that's really my concern. And, oh, the road there is pretty bad, and there is a large hill that you go over just before you get to the property. I think it's sort of a dangerous kind of road situation. So I could see that as being problematic.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to speak to this? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Adam Schnup, and I'm a resident at 184 Winding Hill Road. My wife and I and our two young children live in that residential area. We're now one of about five or six houses. I originally bought the house back in 2008 before I was married and had the children, and there are just a few select farmhouses out in our area of northern Apple Pie Ridge Road. I'm very good friends with the Belford family, who are the family that currently farm that area of 200-some acres. And I'm also friends with the Pritchard family, who is the family across from the Belfords, who literally they're, if you go out on their front porch, you would oversee all of Mr. Valantino's property. And the one thing that I want to bring up to this board and committee is how impressed I am as not only a homeowner, but as a, someone who really envies the old-school barns and the farm mentality and sort of restoring a lot of the nostalgia of what's out there on North Apple Pie Ridge Road. And I've never met Mr. Valantino. I don't really have anything vested in whether this goes through or doesn't go through. But the way this man has rebuilt this farm and took that barn and kept the old foundation and rebuilt what I think is one of the most beautiful structures in Winchester. I am obsessed with this barn. I think that it's a wonderful thing. Mr. Belford, who currently farms the cattle out there, the Black Angus cattle, he grew up in that house. He was one of, I think, eight siblings, and his dad died in that home, and I think 100 years of age. And they sold that property, and everyone out there was very nervous that someone was going to come in as a developer and turn that into a development with multiple homes. And this gentleman, Mr. Valantino, who I have yet to meet, but I think there was a concern that he might potentially develop this area and, you know, overdevelop it. But what he has done to refurbish this barn, the drainage fields have been lined with rock and stone that they've brought out from the property. So it looks very ornate, very well-done, very classy. And the house is an all-brick colonial house that is what I would consider to be an exact replica of the house that they had to tear down, that was unsalvageable. But they used all the old wood from the old barn to redo all the hardwood flooring in this brand-new home. When I go down there with my kids, and we do go on the property every so often just for little walks, it would be an honor as a parent to say that one of my children were able to be married at this farm. And whatever they have in the plans, whatever the right-of-way would be for the road that would come off of Apple Pie Ridge, I saw that in the plans, there were some specifications for signs and entryway and things of that nature. If anything is constructed or built the way the property has been touched to date up to this point, I have no doubt that it will be absolutely classy. And the best way that I can put it into perspective would be to take the Museum of the Shenandoah Valley, that is a very beautiful grounds and has a cattle pasture literally right next to it. I think that is what I see with this six pasture farm, that it would be a working cattle farm. But man, to have a beautiful venue like that, I think is just, it's some eye candy from where I've been. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak with us?
Rebecca Morrison, Gainesboro District. This is the first I've heard of this, and I don't really have an opinion on this, but I do want to remind you that a few years ago on this part of the road, that at night a lady was decapitated by a drunk driver. And to remember that, the taxpayers have to pay to fix a road when traffic is increased.
Anyone else? Anyone? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions of Mr. Klein or the applicant? Any thoughts?
I've been out there, Madam Chairman. I think they've done a fantastic job. I know that we struggled with the last one of the event centers we had before us, and in this raw stage, it's nice to see one in this stage of the work that's been done. I commend the owners and all that's concerned. I'm always concerned about the sound that we do get, noise, but I think they've built a large enough facility to encapsulate the most of that. And hopefully, if they adhere to the neighbors' wishes as well as they did the work out there, I think that the couple people's concerns may be handled in a most professional manner. So I, for one, like that the work that's been done, and I can agree with this tonight.
Anybody else have any comments?
I went out and visited the site as well, and it's an awesome example of conservation of 146 acres of rural land that could be 29 homes. And I commend the applicants for the beautiful job of restoration.
Mrs. Stonewall.
Yes, ma'am. I hear what you're saying on the traffic and the noise. Unfortunately, this owner or no one else can do anything about the road. It's up to VDOT beyond this committee. I'm familiar with the road. I've been out there many times. That being said, at least with this, the traffic would be coming out as one group at a time. Be people coming in, going out. It wouldn't be constantly throughout the day where you'd have a lot of cars just when they're having the events. If it does turn to a problem, I think they could probably contact Sheriff's Department or someone to help, have someone out there to direct traffic if this does turn to a safety situation. As far as the noise, 9:00 o'clock at night, I think that's about the best we could do. That's when normally people go to bed. That's when the outdoor music has to stop. It has to be taken indoors. So I don't see a problem there, though I do hear you. I've got problems with noise where I live, and I'm a long ways from anything, and I can hear the stadium over at Millbrook clear as a bell. But with that, I would recommend approval of this application.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Mullen?
Mullen, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes. Malden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of December. Mr. Bishop is going to help us with the eastern road plan in the comprehensive plan amendment, a proposed amendment to the Frederick County 2035 comprehensive plan to update and clarify a number of items on the eastern road plan. Mr. Bishop. I'm sorry, you have to wait so long.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As you have stated, we are looking at some updates to the eastern road plan, which of course is a component of the overall comprehensive plan for the county. The eastern road plan map itself is the keystone of your transportation chapter, which identifies a road network that is intended to meet the needs of the board's vision in terms of the development of the county and the land uses associated therein. There are a number of updates here. However, the key portions are updates to Route 37 line work, which we've received from VDOT. You'll see modifications to areas where we already had ramps displayed on our eastern road plan. However, in some cases, or your current eastern road plan shows that you want a ramp, but we haven't had drawings before, and now we have some drawings. So we're trying to add those in as we've received that work. I should note that that does not mean that there can't be changes in the future. This is still a long-term project. As you get to final engineering of actual implementation of that project, who knows what you can run into? This is meant to be a portrayal of the best work to date. The other key item is a realignment of 522, a realignment of the 522 realignment, rather, also done in concert with VDOT. And with that, the maps are displayed in a series, with the first one being your current eastern road plan with the items I'm going to go into in detail circled in red. When we took this to the Transportation Committee, we did not have the aerial photographs added on there. And when I took that to CPPS the other night, I got to learn that on the screen with the aerial photographs added, it didn't look so good. It was a little hard to tell. So, you know, what's better than one map? Two maps. So what I've done is laid the version with the aerial next to the version without to try and make it as clear as possible as we go through. And the first segment we're looking at as we focus on Route 37 is Route 37 at Warrior Drive or future Warrior Drive in this situation. That's one of those areas I mentioned where there's long been desire to show an interchange that's not yet been drawn. This is the VDOT drawing work that has been done. You'll notice that it's squeezed to the north a little bit. It's fatter on one side than on the other, for less eloquent way to put it. The reason for that is to maintain ramp spacing while staying out of the stream valley that's on the south side of that interchange, and will eventually need to be bridged when Warrior Drive is constructed. So it's just meant to add a little clarity to our planning.
It's raining. Here's where we are right here.
The next item we're looking at is Route 37 or Route 522 for a landmark, if you will, if any of you are familiar, where that Pony Heart Farm is as you drive down 522 toward Front Royal. This is really right in that location. As you can see in the red, this is an area where we already were displaying ramps under Route 37. However, VDOT has made some modifications there to meet more preferred spacing and Next, we have Route 37 at Route 50. This is where we have Grove Harley-Davidson, it's where the FBI is getting ready to build their facility. Navy Federals out there at that intersection with Independence, right in that vicinity. Once again, you'll note as you look closely that the ramp termini with Route 50 are actually in the same place. However, adjustments have been made to the ramps themselves as you look from the red, which is the existing, to the teal, which is the proposed. Now, as we move on to Sinsiny Road, on the west side, once again, the ramp termini are the same. However, on the east side, they have been pushed out a little further to achieve a greater spacing. And once again, the ramps themselves have, the curvatures have been adjusted. Here we have 37 at Route 7. Frankly, the work's not done here. There have been some adjustments made to what we have already on the books, as you can see from the red to the teal. However, an additional adjustment we are asking for from VDOT, as they're able to accommodate, is to realign the ramp on the west side so that it meets where we plan to realign Valley Mill Road. You'll see that right now the termini is that existing Valley Mill Road. However, your comprehensive plan calls for a realignment of Valley Mill Road, and ultimately that is where Route 37, the ramp, should meet it as those elements of your planning all come together. As we get to Snowden Bridge Boulevard, we are looking at two alternatives. The first alternative in front of you is an 800-foot-wide ramp spacing. The second is a 1,200-foot-wide ramp spacing. To steal a VDOT analogy from a friend of mine at VDOT, we're really talking about squeezing a balloon when you're talking about the 800 versus the 1,200. And what you're looking at is with the 800-foot ramp spacing, you need greater turn lane capacity on Snowden Bridge Boulevard, basically double lefts as opposed to single, single lefts, which means a wider Snowden Bridge Boulevard. With the 1,200-foot spacing, you're able to get away with a narrower Snowden Bridge Boulevard. Boulevard. However, you need a longer ramp, I'm sorry, turn bay to accommodate your turning traffic. The important point here is we have proffered right-of-way through the Greystone rezoning. The 800-foot spacing fits about 95% within that proffered right-of-way area. The 1,200-foot spacing has a much more significant impact to that M1 property, which is why, as we get to the end, you'll see that there is a staff recommendation that we stick with the 800 feet. Moving forward, now you see the interchange with Interstate 81, also something that was not shown in our mapping before, obviously very substantial. Frankly, I would note that as you actually got toward a full design of 37 and a real implementation, you would even see more here because you have an interchange spacing issue from 317 to this new proposed interchange for 37. And if you want to maintain them both, there will be significant work required to Interstate 81 in the form of collector-distributor lanes and that sort of thing to allow those two interchanges to coexist in short spacing. Just to illustrate, I believe it's kind of low for you on the dyes, but you don't even have to get off the map before you can see on the southern end. You can already see the ramps for 317. Finally, we come to the end of the 37 work with where 37 ties in on the west side of Stonewall Industrial Park with existing Route 37. Once again, this is a location where previously we only had the tie-in shown in the curvature of that. VDOT has taken the time to start conceptualizing the ramp work and do some engineer drawings on that. And that's what you see before you that we would like to make sure we capture and show to the best of our ability. And before I move on to the other items that change, really, the reason why it's important to us to do this with Route 37 has everything to do with trying to support the Comprehensive Plan as best as we can moving forward with land use applications and all that sort of thing. As I noted earlier, could these things change? Of course, they could. We don't know when this is going to be fully funded. We're talking about engineering standards and traffic proposed when we actually get that far, which, of course, is always a growing and changing thing. But what this does, the point of putting our best work to date on the plan, it puts us in a position to do the best job we can as staff and, of course, for you all when land use applications come in, to coordinate with them, to get right-of-way and all that sort of thing. As we move into some of our other items, you'll find us back at the FBI Grove Harley-Davidson area as we talk about the intersection of Independence Drive and Route 50. Now, I'm going to go ahead and try and zoom in a little bit. And what you see, the yellow is what exists, and the blue is what we're proposing. And frankly, currently, if you look at the full Eastern Road Plan, you can't even tell this is an issue. But when you zoom in, it gives the impression that we're looking for an offset intersection, which we're not. So all this does is clean up and show that that is going to be a fully aligned intersection and not an offset. Our tag there that points to New Independence Drive alignment isn't totally correct because as FBI is constructing it, that's actually going to be Constitution Drive or Boulevard or something like that. It's Constitution. But the key point here is we're talking about a fully aligned intersection and not an offset on our primary highway there. Now, we move back to Stonewall Industrial Park. And what you're looking at is the end of Lenore Drive, which is one of the existing roadways in Stonewall Industrial Park. If you're coming off of Welltown Road and you make that first left into Stonewall Industrial Park on McGee Lane, that will lead you to Lenore Drive. You follow Lenore Drive back far enough, and you'll almost be at Route 37. So many years back, before my time, frankly, there was a discussion that said, you know what? It makes sense to show a slip ramp from Lenore Drive onto Route 37 as a way for, I believe it was actually part, Mr. Golladay educated me a little bit the other evening, it's actually part of the Cardinal Glass discussion for any who have been around long enough for that. The key point in what we're trying to accomplish here is that previously, as you see on our note there, the piece on the right was not shown. We just had this one little red line drawn. And there was some fear in speaking to some of the leaders in the county that that could give the impression that the only thing we intended to do was allow trucks to exit, or any vehicle, frankly, to exit from Lenore onto that southbound Route 37 side. So the point of this exercise is to show that in the same sense that a vehicle could exit from Lenore to southbound Route 37, so could a vehicle exit from southbound Route 37 onto Lenore. You still cannot access the northbound lane side. That would be a much more extensive operation. Now, I will note that one of the comments we've received, one of the preliminary comments, I'd say, we've received from VDOT on that piece is that there could be conflict with that future interchange that we're talking about where new 37 comes into existing 37. However, from a staff perspective, this is something that could be likely, frankly, much more likely to happen much sooner than that future major improvement of 37 and could add some real value in the midterm. Might there be some conflict in the future if you're talking about the two coexisting? Potentially. But this is something that I guess I would classify as sort of a phased improvement or something that could help until we're able to have something more significant. Moving on, as I noted earlier, I don't know why I put it in the middle since I told you at the beginning, it's one of our biggies as far as this update, but I did. So what we're talking about is the Route 520, the realignment of the Route 522 realignment. As many are aware, in the future, 522 is meant to be moved away from the Exit 313 interchange. That's obviously an area of serious concern for us. We have a lot of traffic coming into that area from a lot of different directions. And part of the proposed solution, longtime now, proposed solution for that is to move some of that further to the east and allow it to come into the interchange from further away. Or if you're already going to be an eastbound trip, it's going to put you a little further along your way without having to get into that interchange area. What you have here, as I zoom in, and I think this one you can see it okay, is the yellow is your existing. And oftentimes, when we talk about that 522 realignment, we talk about it coming up, right up RICO Lane. However, it has been displayed on our Eastern Road Plan for as long as I'm aware of, as actually coming sort of next to RICO Lane so that it actually meets, I actually don't know the name of that street on the north side, but so that you have an aligned intersection as much as you can through there in keeping with principles of access management. And as you can see, that line goes through a number of going concerns in terms of properties. One that people may be most familiar with in terms of a landmark is the Blue Fox Billiards. What the new alignment proposes is actually creates a reduced impact on the airport runway preservation area. As you know, as you can see, the pinkish line actually comes further east than the existing yellow line. And what you can also see in terms of the realignment is it doesn't go through any developed properties. Doesn't mean there's no impacts because it's not as if we own all that property through there. However, it does come down to an existing intersection at Prince Frederick, takes advantage of Prince Frederick itself, and hits those properties much less. This is one that VDOT has, goodness, has tested out through the regional model as part of the Exit 313 interchange modification study. And now, we're going to jump south again, all the way down to Stevens City. And what you're looking at right here is the future Exit 307 relocation. And more specifically, the Connector Road, which is actually already part of your Comprehensive Plan as part of the Stevens City Joint Land Use Plan, that is shown in purple here, it's actually meant to be the first point at which you can get off of what, in that location is Stevens City Bypass. However, once you get over on the Frederick County side is the South Frederick Parkway, the first location at which you'd be able to get back to Route 11. Because as you can see from your graphic, and frankly, as you know intuitively, one of the problems we already have at the existing 307 is the extremely close spacing of Route 11. So among a number of other things, of course. However, this is meant to be the first point at which you can get back to Route 11, creating a much better spacing there. But frankly, this is something that's already in your Joint Land Use Plan that frankly, we just haven't managed to pull onto the Eastern Road Plan map, so we're trying to pull that in. Now, we're back at Exit 310 and Tasker Road. And what you can see here is, once again, the yellow is the existing and the blue is the new proposal. And basically, what we're doing is lining up with VDOT's work. Even on here, you can't really see it, but the blue line is placed exactly within where VDOT has the future Tasker Road realignment done. So that's what you have there. And where you see it deviates on the south side, frankly, that's because it deviated as part of the final engineering approaching the construction work, which took place after this drawing was made. So it's no new lanes, it's no new extension, it's just fixing where it shows on the map. And finally, assuming these changes are adopted, you just have an updated version of the Eastern Road Plan. Now, what we are seeking is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on how you would prefer that they deal with this item. This has been to the Transportation Committee on October 30, and it went to the CPBS two days ago, actually. And in both cases, they have recommended approval, and that is with the 800-foot alternative for Snowden Bridge Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions, John? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding the Eastern Road Plan? Anybody? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, we reviewed this CPSC. It was approved unanimously. Want to speak?
Mr. Marston?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to speak about this?
Yes, well, Gary, as Gary said, it come in front of the CPSC Committee Monday night, and we unanimously approve all these changes to bring here to the Planning Commission tonight.
I'm sorry, Gary.
I was just going to say, there was an approval unanimously there, and Transportation's approved it, and it just makes all the sense in the world, and I would recommend approval.
Second. Mr. Marston, would you like to vote?
May I?
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the Chair votes, yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of December.
I'd say Mr. Bishop also did a very good job in the presentation.
Yes, really good stuff. I like those things. All right, I believe this is our last item. It's an information item, and Mr. Klein will be looking for comments from the Planning Commission. It's the Solar Photovoltaic Power Plant, and it's discussion of a request to add these facilities to the use list for the RA Rural Areas District. Mr. Klein?
Yes, I'll keep it brief since this is a discussion item. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165 of the zoning ordinance to add solar photovoltaic power generating facilities, commonly known as solar farms, to our permitted use list in the RA zoning district. Under our current zoning regulations, public utility generating facilities are allowed as a byright use, and that's for public utilities that are by publicly owned companies. Solar generating energy facilities are typically privately owned and, as such, do not fall under the definition of a public utility. Staff has drafted a revision to the zoning ordinance to include a new definition for solar photovoltaic energy facilities. We've provided supplemental use regulations and revised the permitted use list for the RA zoning district. The definition of a solar photovoltaic energy facility, as we are proposing, is an energy conversion system consisting of photovoltaic panels, support structures, and associated control, conversion, and transmission hardware on a property consisting of six or more acres, also maybe termed a solar farm. The intent of this amendment is to provide additional opportunities for uses in the county's rural areas that preserve the rural and agricultural integrity of these areas and is consistent with the goals and strategies outlined in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Quickly, I'll go through the supplemental use regulations that we're proposing. We will be requiring an engineered site plan. The facility at a minimum should meet the minimum setback requirements for primary structures in the RA district. All wiring shall be underground unless otherwise necessary to connect to the public utility. Buffers and screening will be determined at time of site plan by the zoning administrator, and that the proposal include an abatement and discontinuation plan so that at such time that the facility is either deemed inoperable or technology changes and requires a lesser footprint, the applicant has a plan in place to return the land back to its original condition. The Development Review and Regulations Committee put in quite a bit of work on this amendment at their July, August, and September meetings, and they agree with the proposed changes that are included this evening. And this was forward to the Planning Commission for discussion. This evening, I'm just seeking any comments from this body to take to the Board of Supervisors for further discussion, at which point it will likely, hopefully, come back for a public hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just made a comment that Tyler put in a lot of work. He researched a lot of the localities, the length and breadth of Virginia, and I think he put together good to move forward with it. So I think he did a great job on it, Tyler.
And I'd also like to say that I think Tyler's right on cue here because I do know that there has been some acreage farmers in February County that's been getting requests from some of these utility companies. So I think it's just a matter of time. So I think our timing is pretty good on this.
Did I see Mr. Oats?
I apologize, I missed the meeting in September, DRC, but there's only one issue I have with this, and that's the buffers and screening to be determined by the zoning administrator at the time of site plan. To me, that puts the zoning administrator in a bad position because there's no guidelines. Basically, it puts him in a bad spot because when you make a decision, somebody's happy, somebody's sad. There's nothing to go on as far as, you know, does he determine whether it's 10 feet, 100 feet, what type of trees? I think on the buffer and screening, we either should say, here's what it is, or just let it be whatever the zoning ordinance requires now. But to me, it's just too vague to say it's determined at the time of site plan by the zoning administrator.
Yeah, I would just like to, you kind of stole my thunder there. I was going to ask a question about that. But I would associate myself with Mr. Oats's comments, and it seems like it's a trend with a lot of these ordinance amendments we're including in our buffer standards under the supplemental guidelines that we're deferring to the zoning administrator to set these things. And I don't have a problem with there being flexibility built into it, but I think it might be better to say it's going to be X and then provide some provision for the zoning administrator to waive or modify if other conditions exist so we know there's some starting point. I don't have a problem because I do think you could get some variety of sites, and, you know, one size won't fit all, you know, for how this might come together. But I just think it would be better to have something a little more structured, I think, along the lines of what Mr. Oats was saying. So that would be something to consider if nothing else.
Could make one point of clarification. The panels will have to meet the primary setback in the RA district. So at a minimum, a minimum, they would have to have a 50-foot setback from the rear and the side property lines. In cases where they're adjacent to other large tracts that are greater than six acres, they'd have a 100-foot setback. So you're looking at, you know, that setback plus any existing vegetation topography providing that screen. Discussion at the committee level was about the standards that the industry sets. Discussion at committee level was about the standards that the industry sets as far as, you know, they create compounds that are chain-linked around the facilities and then, you know, allowing the zoning administrator some flexibility to decide if that was visible from a roadway or adjacent property, you know, we could add a sign to have an evergreen hedge or some kind of opaque element. So, that's where that discussion went. Mr. Oates did express that concern at the committee level and was not present for the final vote on it, but it was taken into consideration in our analysis.
Did I remember that there was a representative of the agricultural community that?
Our Virginia Farm Bureau Chair for our district, Paul Anderson, was there, and he expressed his support for this. It was a request from a private engineer who has some speculative interest in the properties, but until there is local control in the ordinance over allowing this type of use, solar companies will not even look at Frederick County. In developing this, we've received call from three firms outside of Virginia that are looking at property in Frederick County, but until, again, there's a local ordinance that allows it, they can't even start with any kind of letter of intent or anything with a property owner. So, this is the first step, and as Mr. Marston alluded to, there's been a lot of calls, a lot of speculation, but until we have anything on paper, it's going to be tough to, you know, we are not going to be able to track that type of use.
Smart to do it.
And I would say I agree with the comments on the buffers. I think it's a little bit too nebulous. It should be at least a minimum.
I will communicate those comments to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Any other comments, Tyler? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I do believe we're at the end of our agenda. Mr. Ruddick?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Anything on your mind?
I'd share with you a couple of items if I could. Probably the first one, which would be, at this point, we don't have any items for our December the 6th Planning Commission meeting, so we could go ahead and cancel that. Having said that, we have a couple of meetings and events that you, as a Planning Commissioner, are invited to. The first one on Wednesday, November the 29th, is a joint work session between the Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission, Economic Development Authority, and Frederick Water. There's a memo on your dais describing that, and it's the opportunity for Frederick Water to meet with those groups, for us all to participate, and they're going to be presenting some of their sewer work, sewer master plan work that they've been completed here recently. The second meeting is on Tuesday, December the 5th, at 6:30 here in the board meeting room, and that's our transportation forum. And it's the third time that that will have occurred. Mr. Bishop, of course, will be leading us through that with hopefully a lot of representation from delegates, VDOT, and plenty of people here and available for interested citizens in the community to come on out and learn about transportation planning and activities in Frederick County. So, those are two items for the Planning Commission to put on your calendar if you can.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to cancel the 6th December meeting?
Six, we have no reading on the six.
Do we need to cancel?
Yeah, let's go ahead and cancel.
Maybe that we cancel the 6th December meeting?
All in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Before we leave this meeting, I just hope that everyone has just a lovely, lovely Thanksgiving and enjoy yours and your family's, et cetera.
Thank you.
Would you, somebody like to adjourn us?
Suggest we adjourn?
Second. All in favor? All opposed?[1773.48]